Good evening. I'd like to call the April 15, 2019 meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Mrs. Thomas Lee, please call the roll.
Mr. Ratt?
Here.
Mr. Weiselman?
Here.
Mr. Sims?
Mr. Pardonee?
Mr. Erdl?
There.
Mrs. Cameron?
There.
Mrs. Wise?
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Sims and Mrs. Pardonee?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wise, second by Mr. Erdl. Mrs. Thomas Lee, call the roll.
Mr. Ratt?
Aye.
Mr. Weiselman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
For all those who are able, please rise. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to your popular religious standness, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Should we have one set of minutes from April 1, 2019? Do we have a motion for a grand set of minutes?
Mayor, I have one comment.
Okay. Roll.
On page 411, to third whole paragraph down, so it's Mr. Rock, there's an extra "would" in the sentence, the last line says, "Would this ordinance exclude..." I should say, "Would this ordinance exclude those tax and rentals?"
I'm very sensitive about moving "would."
Oh.
But some noted this, you know. Are there any changes?
As mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
There's a motion by Mr. Rock to approve the minutes from last meeting on April 1st, April 1st, 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cameron. Discussion. Same time, Mrs. Thomas Lee, call the roll.
Mr. Ratt?
Aye.
Mr. Weiselman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Pass.
Mrs. Cameron? Aye. Mrs. Wise? Aye.
We are now at the portion of the meeting where we take comments from the audience speakers, and we're limited to five minutes with a total time of fifteen minutes per meeting. Is there anybody here who would like to address the city? Is there anyone who would like to address the city? If not, then we will proceed to the next item on the agenda, reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action. Since our last meeting, the city hosted a breakfast with local volunteers at the library where they had presentations by Patrick Rogan Myers on the CRA, Jody Sorene on the school district, David Goldberg, Vice President of First Rebel Bank on VA loans, and for me on the numerous positive attributes about the city of University Heights and why people shouldn't want and are buying homes here. Many tenants noted that more and more homes in University Heights are on the market for just days or even hours instead of months and weeks. People are hearing the good news, that University Heights is so much more than a home. Their Heritage Home Program information session was in this room on April 3, and every seat was filled, and more seats had been put out, and that's the kind of attendance we get. So if you missed the meeting and you want to learn more about free consultations, below-market loans, and approvable projects, you can go to heritagehomeprogram.org. That's heritagehomeprogram.org. There's a phone number there as well, and they call, scheduling your free consultation. They can help you organize the improvements you'd like to make on your home, and put them in an appropriate order if you're not sure where you want to be. One week ago, April 8, we held a joint meeting with the CHUH School Board and the City of University Heights, again here in this room, and it was productive, to say the least. And we will be looking to have a three-way joint meeting with the CHUH School Board and the City of the Heights City Government on the evening of Monday, June 17. That's the evening of Monday, June 17, the exact time of the agenda to follow. Last Tuesday, I addressed the John Carroll University Student Government, had an hour-long question-and-answer session to talk about their numerous concerns, looking for ways to better incorporate our student residents into city events such as the upcoming City Beautiful 5K on September 22 and the New Fall Fest on October 6, as well as listening to their concerns over rental properties and parking issues. I'd like to thank Executive President Mike Bishop and the rest of the executive board, Maddy Toluwski, Sarah Gerard, Brianna Sweeney, Kyle Blazinski, Aiden Jenkins, Lea Van Dyne, and Lauren Phillips for the productive meeting, and the welcome exchange of ideas, as well as their faculty advisor, Mrs. Lisa Ramsey, and of course Kate Malone, the manager of government community relations, John Carroll, for arranging the meeting. I'd like to announce that Ari Jaffe, who we appointed and confirmed to the BZA this last year, is now the new chair of the BZA. I attended the Future Heights Annual Meeting last week. Even as Future Heights has become officially the CDC for the City of Cleveland Heights, their overall mission continues to cover serving the city of University Heights as well. And I look forward to continuing to work with Executive Director Diana Bremer Fisher, President Bob Brown, and the rest of the board staff of Future Heights to promote and improve the overall Heights community. Last Thursday, I represented the Heights communities at the Kaihoga County Planning Commission Board meeting, as we continue to serve the planning needs of the county and seek a permanent executive director. The revised job description is nearly ready for posting, and I envision a nationwide search to bring in the person with the vision to take Kaihoga County to the next level, and yes, I will say it, to Reaching Heights. Friday, I represented the Heights communities again, this time with Planning and Programming Committee of Noaka, where we advanced several topics and initiatives to the next full board meeting in June, and got an update on the Hyperloop. The prototype pod has been built, and three routes for the Cleveland to Chicago route have been mapped out, and I underwent a dizzying Google Earth simulation of the bird's-eye view of one of those routes, from Block 37 in Chicago to Terminal Tower. And I managed not to lose my lunch, and I'm glad the actual Hyperloop will have no workers. Saturday, I addressed the College Democrats of Ohio, who had their state convention at John Carroll University, and I was happy to welcome them here to our city. Sunday, the University Heights Symphony Band played at the Dolan Science Center, to the largest crowd I've seen for them yet at an indoor show, and it might have been the best performance I've seen of the musical to date. Today was Tax Day, and hopefully you filed, and hopefully the bite wasn't much worse than usual, and in a way, if not, then you have till midnight. Coming up, I am participating again in a fundraiser for the Cleveland Great Prices Center. The rehearsal's tomorrow night, the lunch and performances on Wednesday. I'm attending the State of the County address on Thursday. Earth Day is Monday, the 22nd, that's the fourth day of Passover, or Easter Monday, or Day of St. Luke if you're Mike Cook. 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Hyatt, we're giving away University Heights camera shopping bags. I know Councilwoman Mike will be there, I'll be there, and other members of council, please join us and pass out bags to the community. We'll be having the Audit Inference Conference next Tuesday. I'll be representing University Heights at the NOARSD Superb Council Governments Meeting also on Tuesday. Mike Cook and I will be attending the Library Community Partner Meeting next Wednesday. Next Thursday, I'll be attending the Kaihoga County Mayor's and City Managers Association as well, as the Fast Forward Kaihoga Event Downtown at the, I guess they call it Hyatt Convention Center, I don't call it that, or anything else, but it's that big thing there, yes. And then Friday, we'll be hosting a group of high school seniors from leadership Ashtria Villa County, who are learning more about municipal government outside their own town, and we'll be providing them a panel discussion and a city council simulation for them to participate. And I think we're going to talk about the back of the 24th. Don't tell me. Sunday, the 28th, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., the City of University Heights will have a table at the Bike Expo being held at the Wine Spot on Lee Road. If you like bikes, or if you like wine, or if you like both, I hope to see you there. And Monday, not Monday, that's Wednesday, the May 1st, I'll be joining Mayor Carol Rowe and Representative Sen by Mayor Georgine Lilo to preuse the mayor's team at the Reaching Heights spelling meet. It's all for good cause, and only one team can win, and I'm just happy I can spell cap without doing a spot of DA. May 2, the City Planning Commissioner meets. May 3 is the Noaka Transportation Day at CHU within College of Urban Affairs, and he has a plan to be there and then rush back here to Hightide for the Hall of Fame intervention. Next council meeting is May 6, the Cow meeting is an hour before that at 6:00 p.m. That is not to be confused with the Chicken meeting. Cow is the committee of the whole. Not to steal any comfort from Councilman Weiselman, but it seems as if we will let Cooper the Chicken and the rest of the hens stay in University Heights, and Bethany Jessica from the Cleveland Methodist Parks will be back on May 14. It's May 14, Tuesday, 6:00 p.m. here, at the Board of Education for a Chicken Heaving Seminar. By ordinance, one must attend a seminar approved by the Safety Director before one may get a permit to keep chickens in University Heights. And this seminar is so approved, so even if you aren't sure if you want chickens of your own, come on out. Finally, for all members of council, please mark this date. February, no, not that. We, Friday, Friday, May 31. John Carroll University, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:15 p.m., we are having a free public records training. We all need it. You may not think you need it, but we all need it. And if you can't be there, be there. If you can't be there, on the right highway, be there. And if you want, I can grab the... Of course not. Thank you, this concludes my report. Next up on the agenda, we'll have a presentation from Lynn Weiser, the chairperson of the Mayor's Municipal Future Committee. There's a report being distributed to council, and...
Ms. Weiser, you're a lecturer. Sure, I'm a lecturer. And I spent my whole day yelling at her, lecturing, so I guess I can do this. For those of you that didn't get a copy of the report, basically, the original charge for the committee was to help create and envision the future of our municipal facilities, including two, but not limited to, renovating buildings, city hall, rebuilding city hall, police station, fire station, service facilities, and community center. The committee met twice during the summer. Discussion identified a number of challenges. We were also provided with documentation from all the departments from the U. Number one, the facilities are older, and in many cases outdated, which I don't think any, you know, self-sustaining of us. City hall does not have enough office space for staff. This requires the city now to start renting out space off-campus for some departments. It's taking a high degree of maintenance and repair. Basement flooded in a recent heavy rainstorm released a few months ago. It is not handicap accessible, which is why we are here. Attempting to add an elevator would run about $600,000, and it would, again, eliminate some of what office space remains in the building. And then the lift issues, which I've been unknowing for years still to me. Fire facilities can't be adapted to accommodate a female firefighter, limiting hiring options. There's also space limitations. Obviously, with the new quint coming in that barely fits into the fire bay, that's become the reality. And more equipment is big these days. Police department had to close the jail, which didn't conform to current required standards, leading to higher costs to house prisoners. Police personnel are scattered. Once again, the great University Heights tradition of buy a house, move into Hartley Theater, the detective bureau next to the park. Space to store police vehicles is limited, although it's wonderful to see them off the Orangeville Center, when we managed to destroy the blue-colored car. Somebody hit it, because they placed it on insurance. Space to store police vehicles is limited. Female officer accommodations are actually now housed in private garage. The service department, there is a potential decision, they may have to find a new salt storage site or build one. And again, current facilities mean most of our equipment out. It is not housed, and they're certainly not adequate for department use. The building department, limited spaces, housed on the house on campus. Record storage had to be moved, because we had to demolish the house we had that in, where we had lost some records due to flooding. Discussion, we got through that, didn't we? Discussion also covered potential ideas for where or how the facilities might be corrected. Some discussion did revolve around Wiley being a potential alternative if the Board of Education does decide to sell the facility once the middle school renovations are completed. Rebuilding on the current campus was talked about, along with the possibility of using the community park site, although it was thought this couldn't be done because of the bond issue used to pay for the park. At the second meeting, it was suggested we might run a tour of the facilities that we personally had not been actually in. Number of the committee felt it wouldn't be required since our discussions basically had led us to a consensus that something needed to be done about the facilities. A vote was taken, and it was unanimous, that something needs to be done. What that needs to be done is, I think, what we finally discussed is a bit outside of the purview of the individuals who sat on the committee. As an alternative, I did discuss, and we continue to discuss, setting up times to tour the existing facility. There was still a general sense of the committee, it wouldn't be, at that sort of extent of what we wouldn't be able to do. I worked with the mayor to try to attempt to set up times that would be convenient for both department heads and community members to tour in various areas, which just, that could prove to be a scheduling nightmare in more than one way. So on the 23rd of January, I sent a proposal to the committee by email, asking them to weigh in on a proposal, quote, "There are firms that can do professional evaluation of buildings and property that the city owns. Recommend to mayor and council that they do a request for proposal for this. The firms then submit bids with an estimated cost for the formal analysis and recommendations as to how the city could move forward and what estimated cost was. I also think we could recommend that the residents be included as a formal part of the process as things move forward." The committee voted by email, seven members moved to move the recommendation forward, and two voted against it. I'll give the formal recommendation at the end, but to give a full sense of the committee members' responses for those voting in the negative, "The City of University Heights has incurred substantial strains to its budget this year," this is a quote, "A lot of new city employees, new branding, new equipment, higher operating costs. The last minutes I read, the city did not have a budget set for 2019. I am not comfortable recommending that the city pursue this until a clear financial plan for the city is known." The other nay vote, quote, "I vote nay. I am not clear about the financial situation of the city. I feel we will have a better end product here if the citizens are informed. Let our group do start the investigation, share the findings, and move forward." If I remember correctly, the mayor wanted the citizens involved. Let us do the work we agreed to do, keep our contract with the mayor. A meeting would be nice. From those voting of the seven in affirmative, my vote is yea. I think we should recommend that the city issue an RFP. I am not qualified to give the city my recommendations. I think the city should hire a firm to recommend what needs to be done for the City of University Heights. Another quote, "I vote yea for the RFP with citizen involvement. The school board is working with the firm to help us analyze our facilities, and I found their expertise to be invaluable. However, citizen involvement is still required to help identify the community priorities and balance against financial resources." Third one, my vote is yea for recommending the RFP to evaluate the buildings and come up with a recommendation. I think the actions to be studied to take is, one, take no action, two, upgrade the current facilities, three, construct new facilities, likely on the Wiley campus, and as others have mentioned, there should be limits, time and money placed on this evaluation. Another vote was yea. That said, there should be parameters put forth, but not to exceed a certain amount of timeframe to complete. I believe this is a more responsible approach, so we can understand the state of the buildings, of the city's buildings. I don't think any of us have enough knowledge about the condition of our current stock. This is the prudent choice. The other quote, "The RFP is the best way to get professional analysis. We must include all residents to participate." And finally, hi, I think we need to issue an RFP with a limited scope. Also, we would need the expertise of someone who is familiar with what should be done, so our facilities, whether current or upgraded, will need current operating standards and laws. We can set a budget and set a timeline for an RFP. Our recommendation can be limited to issuing an RFP for the study not to exceed a certain fee. Based on the comments, voting in the affirmative, the committee then recommends, committee's recommendation is as follows. A request for proposal, RFP, be prepared in bid slot for a firm to evaluate the city's current buildings and their uses. The analysis should include a recommendation of alternatives to the current configuration if required. Estimates for timelines and potential costs should be included as a part of the proposal. The committee further wishes to call to the mayor and council's attention their concerns about the cost of such a study, and strongly encourages the mayor and council to do due diligence when determining a budgeted cost for the RFP that might be selected. That's the formal submission that I sent to the mayor. The mayor and I did discuss it. We talked about the concerns regarding the finances, and at that point, the city budget for 2019 had not been approved, and we agreed that it would be prudent to withhold this until the city budget went through council review and was approved, to see if we actually had any funding that could be used to actually pay for an RFP to be done. And that is why it was delayed until this meeting on April 15. The mayor had asked me to do it on April 1, but unfortunately, that was opening day, and you can get me to do a lot, but you cannot get me to miss opening day. So we did agree, the two-week delay wouldn't kill it. I did send out to the rest of the committee a copy of the report yesterday with the additional explanation as to for the delay for this, so that everyone on the committee did have it. I would definitely like to thank the committee members, who are Patricia Baskin, Nina Golder, Shula Huffman, Mary McFadden, Jeffrey Morse, Rebecca Slifer, Jody Sorene, Sean Weiss, and I did not put my personal comments on this. All of these are from the committee members themselves, and here is exactly what my personal comment is. I served on this council in 2007, and the finance chair was the previous mayor. And at that time, on the finance committee, I urged the city to develop a capital budget And that went nowhere, and I have been on the Budget Advisory Committee, and council members and the mayor have heard me talk about capital budgeting, and generally, I'm told, oh, look, we have what roads we need to move, and we need to buy these police cars and these fire trucks. That is all capital. But we also have capital in terms of the buildings and lands that the city owns. We have capital that requires maintenance. We have capital that requires upholding. And we, as a city, have avoided really biting the bullet and looking at what we have to do. I know from Mayor Rothschild when I was on council, that many years ago, the powers that we, that were on this council, far before anybody that's up there now, actually saw the redevelopment of Cedar Taylor, University Square, and Green Road as the economic engine to try to put in, to raise the kind of funding that would be required to actually do something about our municipal buildings. That vision from the past was partially implemented, but the piece that was never implemented was really looking at the facilities that we have. As the chair of the committee, I chose not to share that kind of information with the committee, because I felt it needed to be holistic and from the committee itself. And I think that that is something that, on a personal level, I'm going to ask this council and the mayor going forward to also consider. So if you have any questions, I definitely can answer.
Well, before I ask if anybody has any questions, I want to thank you, Ms. Weiser, as well as all the members of the committee, which you listed for their work on this. I know several other members are here, Mrs. Solomon, Mrs. Golder, and...
Sean's here.
Sean here?
And she was.
And she was. Oh, well, yes.
Yeah, I don't think she was going to try this.
Yes, and I take to part, of course, your comments you've added as well, beyond the report, but your observations that you made and supplement that. So does anybody have any questions for Lynn Weiser, or the board, or the work of the committee, or any comments? Mr. Weiselman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll echo the mayor's comments, thanking the participants of the committee. I really appreciate it. It's wonderful to have citizens who are willing to be so engaged on issues like this. You know, one thing, it's hard to convince people that, it's easy to convince people when you need new facilities, it's hard to convince them that we need to be the people to pay for them, and that's really, I think, going to be the heavy lifting here. I'm all for an RFP. I think we can limit the amount of the RFP from the very start. We can tell somebody, you know, I mean, we haven't discussed figures, and I'm not lobbying for anything, but we should say, you know, here's what we need, can you do it for $10,000 or $15,000, whatever the amount is, instead of having it be open-ended. And it's certainly, I think, something that the committee should be involved with. I think part of the RFP can be the comparison between what we're spending now and the increased cost that we can jettison once we get new facilities. In other words, we're paying $80,000 or so a year for the jail in Solon. We pay to go back and forth to the jail in Solon, we rent space in the annex. We have to pay for all the increased maintenance that these buildings cost us now. We have the records, the building has the records and all the other things. So I think there's an easy way or a path to get to some idea of how much money we'll save when we invest in something like this. I don't think this is a choice on behalf of the city. I think it's something that's very necessary, but, you know, hopefully, I think this is going to be something that we're able to tackle. But I'm in favor of following the committee's recommendation. I would appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser. Any further questions or comments? Mr. Rock?
I'll just piggyback off of that, and I agree with my colleague here, that I think we should pursue the RFP route for an expert to look at the facilities. You know, I am an architect, and I work with other municipalities, and it's easy for me to say, yes, you need to do this, this, and this. Now I'm on the other side of the table. It isn't. It's a tough pill to swallow. So, and I understand what you're saying here, how much we're spending to maintain the facilities and such. Additionally, we were limited on the, when we looked at the quint, there was only two models we could buy because of the size of the bay, and as we look at other vehicles and other service vehicles, police vehicles, we're going to be limited, as well as the size of the vehicle changes. So we don't want to paint ourselves into a corner, and being in this building here, this is the school board, you know, there was something really special about being in council chambers. It's our building, and we can't be there because it's not accessible. So, and when I ran, I really pushed that we had to have an accessible building, and we couldn't do it. And here we are today, and we deserve a city hall that's accessible to everybody in this city, because it's our community building. And I'm going to continue to push for that, so that one day, you know, the school board could have their room back, and there still be more business here, but we can have our special building as well. I think there's different opportunities, that maybe we don't have to build a new building our own. I work with state schools that do, you know, lease buy-back, where they have a developer build buildings, they lease the space, it's on their land, so there's so many options out there for financing that, you know, because we haven't been capital budgeting this whole time, it's not something that we're going to have to just come up with the money tomorrow. There's other ways that we can discover and find ways to build this.
Capital budget's been 25 years.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's not, police cars and fire trucks are immediate purchases.
Right.
But capital budget's been 25 years, so you're looking at a bit. And some people have told me that a portion of the fear of actually finding out is then we might actually have to make some decisions.
We do, and we can't wait 25 years.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, not just regarding buildings, but maybe probably two times as well. All of that, that has to be an open, to me, and this is my personal belief, that has to be open community discussion, but you have to have something to start with.
And you're talking about the bones of the facility when you were talking about your report of, you know, on day one of the mayor's tenure. We had a computer meltdown. There's a whole infrastructural component to this with the servers that we have. That's been just untouched, you know. We've made a big overhaul this year, but it's nowhere near where we could be. And the same with the phone lines, and I could just go on and on and on about that. So, yeah, I do support the RFP, let the professionals give us their opinion on what steps we need to take.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Any further questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the committee. I think this is probably one of the most important committees that has worked through this year. I want to stress the importance of that capital budget. And I know that the finance director and the mayor are committed to doing that, because it has been discussed in the financial advisory committee. And it's going to be a process, and I also, I agree that it needs to be open to the community for public discussion, you know, after we actually have some of the, like Ms. Weiss said, the elements kind of figured out.
Why, no questions?
No questions, just kind of.
Ms. Earl, go ahead.
Yeah. I'd say over the years, you know, I would characterize the city as not so much getting excited regarding capital budgets, but it's just been, you know, frugal. And, you know, if you have a car and you don't have a lot of income, you maintain the car as long as you can over the years. Body venture, you know, the transmission drops out of it, you got to do something about it. When we rebuilt Purvis Pool, a bunch of us came to city hall and said, you know, the pool stays, it's old. And it turned out that pool's lifespan on the average is about 20 years, and our pool is 30 years old. It had been well-maintained, you know, with, you know, an honest purpose in mind, and that was just to try and do what we can with what little we have. And so I think that it's a great time, actually, it's a must-do time to get this done and to do it with a plan and a vision and working into the angle workings of our city, I think is a great thing, and I really look forward to it.
Very good. I think Ms. Earl, any further questions or comments? Mrs. Cameron?
Yes, Ms. Weiss. Ms. Weiss, I have listened to you over many years, make a heartfelt pledge and petition powers that deep for capital budgeting. So I just want to say to you that I really feel that with this current administration, we will get you what you've been asked for over the years. And it's not just for you, it's for the city, it's for our people, is to give us some instruction on how things should be done, and it's been asked to. So, but I really feel at this point that we are going to get into the weeds on it. We're going to have to roll in some mud, take a few hits, but in the end, I think it will be for the best. And I think it will be what you envisioned us to be as citizens.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Wendy, is there anything you'd like to add?
Oh, I think I have already...
I think you did, but I want...
Yeah, you know, part of it is, I've been very fortunate to be involved in this. I've been very fortunate to live in a city where we come together as a community to talk about things, and where we take first steps and then go from there. And I think that's, that's the thing. It isn't, I think, that any one person wants in this, that's what all of us try to get to. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would dovetail in with that last comment also, that we're right, this is what any one person wants, or this is what people up here might want. It is, it is what the community wants, and further community involvement as we continue on this process, of course, paramount and a necessary part of what we'll be doing. Thank you. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is item B, ordinance 2019-16, amending codified ordinance chapter 20 entitled Fair Housing for the purpose of clarifying definition of source of income and updating various provisions for consistency with state and federal fair housing laws. This is on second reading, and there is a revised version that the law director has passed out. He's going to explain briefly the changes. Ms. Rock?
Thank you, Mayor. During the week, I got a couple of emails, actually, from Chris Canary from the Housing Center suggesting a couple of additional small revisions, and I just want to walk through those briefly with council. They are in some sections, 820.04 S and T. S is the provision that relates to what a landlord can ask for in a rental application, and it's been recommended that we remove the reference to source of income from that particular provision since it is lawful for a landlord to do its due diligence to make sure that a tenant has the means to pay their debt. So that's the change in S. And then T is the provision that relates to the provision of burial plots. And from that provision, we are removing the reference to religious institutions since there is an exception for religious institutions that allows a religious institution to discriminate on the basis of religion and the allocation of their property. So those are the two changes. Again, they're both at the recommendation of the Housing Center. And other than that, the proposed ordinance is the same as the version that was previously...
Good, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. So anybody have any questions or comments with regard to Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to clarify, as the law director, the version that we have that came out of the packet, sections 8, 2004, S, and T, and you are all new, you're interested in carving out the language from those particular sections. Just from S? Source of income in S and religion in T.
Correct.
Otherwise, they stay the same?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Any further questions or comments about changes or about the proposed ordinance? If there are none, is there a motion? Motion about by Mrs. Cameron, is there a second?
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Weiss. Is there any further discussion? Standing none, Mrs. Thomas, or you go over.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
And Mrs. White?
Aye.
Very good. Motion ordinance passes. Letter C, next item on the agenda, is ordinance 2019-18, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agency agreement with the University Heights Corporation. This is on second reading, and Mrs. Rock, you have the authority. Mrs. Rock, please.
Just one thing, please.
Uh, well, you know what? You're coming up on item D, I think, and we're on... Oh, okay. Well, I see it's on second reading.
You know, it sounds like we have different agendas.
Oh, you know what? There we have it. I may have a... Oh, okay. We have different agendas. We passed the agency agreement last time.
We talked about the...
Those were sorry. This is the second reading.
Okay. All right. Well, we seem to have two different agendas.
The ordinance numbers on my agenda are different from the ordinance numbers on that one.
We have to start over.
Well, my 1916 fair housing, that was correct.
One more, I...
All right, all right. So, the agenda I have that I brought up briefly, we have 2019, we have 2019 being the one authorizing the mayor to enter into an agency agreement with the University Heights City Building Corporation. Is that what we all thought? Dogging agenda, this. Okay. That happens sometimes. Okay.
I'm looking at the, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That's all right.
I'm looking at the last agenda from April 1st, and the first item was enacting the section of the code of ordinance that credits the beautiful corporation, but not item C, which is the agency agreement. We added?
Yes, we added that during the meeting. We actually...
And we talked about it.
Right. And we amended the agenda at the meeting because we inadvertently left it off the agenda.
Correct.
So this would be the second?
So this is the second reading. Okay. All right. So, this is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agency agreement with the University Heights City Building Corporation. This is the reasons for this are, the city's going to want to appoint the CIC as its agent for economic development activities and other tasks permitted under revised code from time to time, and to improve various aspects of the city's investment plan, and for the repurposing, re-plantation, refurbishment, or use of real property, and also, the city wishes to authorize a lease to the University Heights City Building Corporation from time to time as needed, on a managed basis, the use of city employees, the use of city property, including computer hardware and software, and the city wishes to acknowledge that a lease of separate employees constitutes a material consideration for the corporation's agreement to serve the city's agent.
So I would just add to that, Mayor, that it is a statutory requirement that the city appoint the CIC as its agent and enter into an agreement that puts that appointment in writing, and in connection with any real estate transaction that involves the CIC, we will do, per statutes, file a copy of the agency agreement for recording on the document, so that it's clear that it's a CIC transaction, and that's a requirement of state law.
Very good. Any questions about the proposed ordinance? Any comments? Or a motion?
Mayor, I'm moved that we approve ordinance 2019-18, authorizing the mayor to enter into the agency agreement with the University Heights City Building Corporation.
Very good. We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Rock, second by Mrs. Weiss. Any further discussion? Ms. Thomas, you go over.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Very good. The ordinance is adopted. Next is ordinance 2019-19, enacting codified ordinance section, or chapter, rather, 1251 of the zoning code title of residential attached district. This is on first reading. Mrs. Rock, you have a little question?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This ordinance forward is the city wishes to create a new zoning district that will enact regulations for the purpose of permitting and promoting the development of high-density residential development. As you know, Patrick, Cora, and Myers and I have been working on updating the zoning code, and recently, in the past couple of months, I have been approached and had discussions with two different developers, who have both expressed interest in developing the site located east of South David Road and west of Wind Road. So, in terms of those discussions, we decided to move this chapter forward and bring it to you. Both of the proposed developments include high residential, high-density residential housing, and therefore, moving it forward, we wanted either both a change in the zoning there would help promote development in that area. The zoning that is before you will offer additional housing options for our residents, and will allow the city to use this land to its highest and best use. Not only has this been a positive impact if you have new residents, as a benefit to our community, but a new development in this area will propel redevelopment in commercial areas surrounding the site, which include both the commercial areas in University Heights and Cleveland Heights. So that's the first ordinance before you today for this code.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Rock. Are there any questions for Mrs. Rock? Mr. Rock?
Yes, I'm very, very excited about this. This is a long overdue that we include this in our code, and I believe the next item that will consider specific parcels, which is going to be considered. This, I believe, will give a diversity of housing stock to our community that we do not have, that we much need. And so I support it. I'm very excited about it, and I hope it passes, and I hope the next item on which we assign it to specific parcels passes as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Anyone else?
Yes, I think this is exciting as well. I see this as a new phase of, you know, the future of University Heights, when you have really developed something particularly residential in, I don't know how long. And it's in a particularly needy section of our city that has not really gotten much attention in a while. And as you said, and I firmly believe that this could really light up that whole quadrant, not just that one corner of University Heights. It's the gateway to University Heights. I'm really excited about it.
Thank you. If we talked about that immediately up there, and you just really highlighted that a little bit, and we could ask...
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I think it's worth mentioning for context as well, that several of the parcels that are being rezoned are owned by the city, number one, and number two, that all of the parcels that are being rezoned are currently vacant and do not have, are not generating any kind of tax revenue.
Yes, I could say one thing. Because you say that any potential project that came forward on these parcels, because they're city-owned, would have the review of the city, the planning commission, the city council, before it moves on to the CIC. Is that right?
Yes. Since we're talking about both of the ordinances together, and again, for context, I think it's also worth pointing out that both this ordinance and the next one go through an elongated process for adoption by council. So following this meeting, or following the reading tonight of these ordinances, they will be referred to the planning commission, and there will be a public hearing held along with the planning commission meeting to review and comment on and make a recommendation about each of the proposed ordinances. And those meetings will entail notice to parcel owners and to neighboring property owners and to the community agenda.
That's after this passes? So after second reading?
No, no, it's after first reading. It'll go through that process and then come back for a second reading.
Has the planning commission coming up? Or is it next one?
Yes.
Makes sense. Yeah, so that's coming.
And also, then, just on two ordinances, there's two things I want to check with them. Do we should make the amendments now since they are being referred to plan? It's just a matter of some, a section number. I mean, the ordinance 2019-19, there's one of the warnings that has the wrong section. That would have been a second. So this would be on the fourth page, and under building design features?
It's the number?
Number five. So that sentence says frontage feature, and then in parentheses, figure H1 of the section. I would scratch out C figure H1 of the section and say, C section 1251.08. And then if you go onto the next page, you'll see there is section 1251.08.1, diagrams and modifications. We can get rid of that last one. That really should just be, that section should be 1251.08, no one after that. And then that's the correct reference on the page four.
Any motion for this? Any other motion for this?
Please.
I'd like to move, we amend those two sections that Drucker spoke about, which would be 1251.07, C5, as she designated, and 1251.08.01 should be renumbered to just say 1251.08.
Motion by Mr. Weiss to make those amendments, is there a second?
Second.
Second, aye, and Mrs. Weiss. Any discussion on the amendment? Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
I don't know if we need to refer this to planning before we run, there is one change from before in December 2019.
Yeah, I was going to make that when I read that.
With the other parcel?
Yes, to add the parcel to the song.
If you do that before you read it, then you're not going to remember.
What about is read it?
You can read it with the parcel on it.
Read it with the additional parcel on it, or you're done, you're good. Then that's what I was going to.
So this would be my only change, is that what I'm saying?
Very good, thank you, very excited, Mrs. Weiss. Just want to, so I thank you, Mrs. Drucker, to you and Mr. Virgil Myers, for putting it over this, we've hired somebody to do the code, ten years, we got almost nothing, you guys are here for a matter of months, and already we've got a new section of the code, I think it's fantastic.
Just want to clarify, these are rezoning, only those five parcels, seven parcels are on Taylor Road just north of Cedar.
It's Taylor Road north of Cedar, but not just north of Cedar, it's in the north eastern corner of the city, on either, you know, on Taylor, or on Wind, or between Taylor and.
Right, okay, so just want to make sure that we're only rezoning those particular areas, and, and again, this fits in the code so that any work that gets done, or any development that has to follow the normal procedures that we have in the city, planning, ECO, and also the administration.
Correct.
I think it makes sense to entertain a recommendation or a motion to refer the planning commission, just that?
Form one.
It's done in form?
Okay, that sounds good. Is there a motion to refer this agenda item to planning?
Some of.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Weiss, and second by Mrs. Cameron, is there any discussion? If not, Mrs. Thomas, we, you call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss?
Aye.
Very good, we've had our first reading, and we have referred this item to the planning commission for their next meeting in May. Next item is Agenda Item E, ordinance 2019-20, and zoning, permanent parcel numbers 722-01-001, 722-01-002, 722-01-003, 722-01-004, 722-01-005, 722-01-006, and 722-01-118, located east of South Taylor Road and west of Wind Road, from U1 to residential attached district or RA, this is on first reading, Mrs. Drucker, would you continue?
It's important to rezon these necessary parcels, they would become the actual district that was discussed previously, which we got residential attached district, chapter 1251 in our code, which is changed after by council. So this identifies the council owner who confronts its only old parcels that are, that is.
Very good. Are there any questions, or Mrs. Drucker? There's nothing further, I would entertain a motion to refer this matter also, do you want to refer this as well? Correct. Yes, is there a motion to refer this agenda item as well to the planning commission for consideration at their next meeting?
Seven.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Earl, I'll pick that up in a second by Mrs. Weiss, is there any discussion? If there is none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Excuse me, Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, so the first meeting has been had, and that is referred to the planning commission, thank you again, Mrs. Drucker, and Mr. Earl, next, we have the ordinance. Next up is Agenda Item F, motion authorizing payment to signal service for the repair of the Cedar Green Road Traffic Signal Controller, in an amount not to exceed $20,105.41 cents.
No, Mark, for us, last year, the signal controller at the corner of Cedar and Green was struck by a stick robber, and we had repairs performed last year that have since been paid as part of the permanent appropriations for this year, that would be the $11,472.99 cents, that were the emergency repairs that have been collected back from the number I am.
Okay.
But we still have the permanent repairs to make, and this is a motion to authorize the permanent appropriations after a credit for equipment on loan as part of the temporary repairs, would be $20,105.41 cents, and per my reading of our competitive bidding schedules, this would be exempted based upon the required skill and output. That's all made out in a motion, and after you've given any questions, I can elaborate on it, as well as a few broaders, and also elaborate on the incident itself last year.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Gough, are there any questions for Mr. Gough in regard to those motion, or the incident, or anything connected? Mrs. Cameron?
I just wanted you to repeat, the amount of the temporary repairs was $11,000?
Yeah, the temporary repairs are listed on top of quote, so they were $11,472.99 cents.
Okay.
That does include a $7,000 loan of the emergency goals cabinet, that will be credited on the final.
Very good. Now, any other question, Mr. Rock?
Yes, Mayor, so, we take the repair cost $11,500, and the permanent, those two together, we have to add those together, correct, and that was budgeted at the appropriations?
Yes.
Thirty thousand, thirty, $1,600, and then we also, from what I understand, we've budgeted a revenue from the insurance claim, do we think the insurance claim, will we get a hundred percent back, or?
Unless our deductible, which I believe is $2,500.
Okay.
But that's already been approved by the insurer, waiting to pay the reimbursement out to us after we pay.
After we pay that.
We paid, the first payment to the vendor, but this was submitted as one company.
Okay, so the cost to the city in the end of the day would be $2,500.
Yes.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Drucker, Mr. White, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Gough, so I understand that, I mean, it seems like this falls within the bidding exception of the ordinance, is there a reason why we are not bidding it, according to signal service corporation?
They are, the corporation we rely on, depends upon for doing most of our signal work, beyond that, I'd probably defer to a few broaders to oversee the traffic control for it.
So we have an ongoing relationship with them, and they do work in the city for other issues that we have for services, or for these signals and stuff?
I believe so, and a few broaders are going to be open right now.
Yeah, I forgot, um, signal service team shows the market in this region, five reasons to factor in, as they did with the type of personnel in the past, they also, the market report of traditional, as well as around the facility, the situation happened, and there's section that is one of our most busy sections, we have received repairs done, we obviously, there you have hardware that was put into place to give the signal up as soon as possible, with the reasons that the fact that it's indicated, plus the fact there you have equipment there, is why we've got to this point where it's not going to be that the service they provided, not just to us, or the community that's reaching, the fact that there you have hardware and equipment, that's a dedication to our version.
And we're happy with the work they do, and the fact that they're right here.
Correct.
So we call them, two in the morning, they're coming right out.
Coming right out. If you have any emergencies, call me, I'll be tracking them.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Anything further for the chief, or anyone else, Mrs. Cameron?
Yes, Chief, do you recall the RTA incident?
That would be the other incident where signal service had come out, and we had assistance, essential, that was impossible, that was always based there, but we were able to have company in the signal service, and so we provided service, assisted with the neighbors, we got down, we had another day, we tried to take out numerous dangerous exceptions, and, sorry, C1, probably about five or six, or seven, signal service, assistance with that.
I just wondered, can you recall what was involved?
I mean, I recall, we see.
The reason I ask is, I was driving down Lawrenceville, and someone took out a signal device, shaking, and I was coming to drive, and it cost a terrible amount.
Yes, so, just for some, I heard what it's like, software, a couple house maintenance workshops, approximately $1,000, just because of the side, or five, and something to take out on that, some of the costs.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron, any further questions or comments, and if not, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Black, I move that we authorize the payment to signal service for repair of the Cedar Green Traffic Signal Controller in the amount not to exceed $20,105.41 cents.
Thank you, Mr. Rock, we have a motion by Mr. Weiss, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss, is there any further discussion? There is none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss?
Aye.
Very good, motion carries, thank you, Chief Rogers, for your arguments. Next item is Item G, motion to apply for EMS equipment grant for the Ohio Emergency Medical Services need and possible purchase of EMS, with the chief, Kirk, on.
Thank you, Mayor, this is, I'm old, this year, fire department sat in on all the finance committee meetings, budget meetings, and we heard the need for increased revenues, so we tried to sit down and take a little look, grant opportunities, to apply for the help, and, and what I need, other grants in particulars, in the Ohio Department of Commerce, we apply plus one each year, and our own equipment somewhere in the $3,000 range, there's no match on this grant, and we likely use this for equipment for, we should be less where our paramedics, we need holistic less, and all that's the kind of forms of those situations.
Very good, any questions for Chief Kirk?
Thank you, I just want to thank by your chief, and I see you have a lot more grants coming up, so he'll be up there for a while, but I know that in one of the meetings, we did speak about vests, and I personally think it's great work, it's great.
Very good, thank you, Mrs. Weiss, any further comments?
I think that's a point of procedure, Mr. White, do we need to have a separate motion for each one of these grants, or can we just wait till the end and override the application altogether?
You need to have a separate motion, of course.
I'm sure we can.
The reason is, the reason is because you can compromise a councilperson, a councilperson's ability to strategically vote in any particular motion beyond the law to help.
Thank you.
At least one. Thank you, all right, is there a motion to adopt?
Yes, Mayor, I'll move that we adopt this motion to apply for the EMS equipment grant from the Ohio Emergency Medical Services.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Rock, second by Mrs. Cameron, is there any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye. Mr. Weiss? Aye.
Very good, motion carries, next is Item H, motion to apply for Ohio Fire Equipment Grant Program, from the Ohio Department of Commerce for purchase of RIT intervention packs, Chief Kirk, on.
Thank you, Mayor, this grant is from the Ohio Department of Commerce, the fire department uses what we refer to as RIT packs, these are used in a fire program, any air distress situation, or the air pack that they're wearing becomes compromised, or if they run out of air and structure, we send a team, and the rest of them will treat their packs. They're governed by ODOT because of their shoulders that they have to be hydrotest, hydrostatically tested each five years, and a max life of fifteen years, we're in the fifteenth year for this, we do, that's the sign of the budget for capital improvement, we're trying to simplify the year, to see what's coming forward.
Excellent, thank you, Chief. Any comments, questions, or a motion? And a motion by Mrs. Cameron, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss, is there any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye. Mr. Weiss? Aye.
Motion carries, and we move on to Item I, motion to apply for community grant program from Walmart Foundation for the purchase of smoke detectors for the residential smoke detector program, Chief Kirk.
Walmart Community Grant Program assists with communities achieving their community risk reduction plans, for restoration of fire prevention bureau, we talked about getting our residential smoke detector program up and running again, so we're looking for ways to start the funding to purchase those smoke detectors, which looks to be part of this grant, also, let's hope that you're able to.
Excellent, thank you, Chief Kirk, any questions, comments for Chief Kirk on this motion for application? Mrs. Weiss?
How many smoke detectors does this grant provide?
Chief, on.
And do we now also have smoke detectors available for residents, or this, this is what this will be providing?
Very good, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Some.
Motion by Mrs. Weiss, second by Mr. Weissman, any discussion? Agenda, Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weissman?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Ms. Cameron?
Aye. Aye.
Very good, Lieutenant Sonda, Item J, motion to apply for assistance to firefighters' Grant, AFG, program from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for the purchase of diesel exhaust extraction units for all apparatus in fire department day, or areas, Chief Kirk, on.
The FEMA G Grant has stipulations that comply with the Bureau of Work and, kind of, Public and Public Risk Reduction Program, one of the criteria in there for fire department specifically, work for cancer prevention, not only in park, but in the field in regards to house fires, but in the station, as a great guards, diesel exhaust particulates, so this grant is for devices that look up to the exhaust pipes of all the apparatus in the bay floors, and when they're started up, or back then, it's less difficult to breathe from exhaust port. This grant would be applied for an amount of $3,000, and... This grant would be applied for an amount of eight thousand dollars, and it would be a five percent pension fund, fifty thousand, under fifty dollars.
Very good. Any questions for Chief Perko? Or comments?
I'll just make a comment. I understand that this is something to be, I've obviously needed a firehouse for some time, and it's my understanding that these abstractors are such that should we rebuild the firehouse in the near future, that this would be the kind of thing that would be moved from present structure to the north.
Correct.
Very good. I also want to stress the importance that your living quarters are right above the fire apparatus bay, and it is important that we extract these fields. So, yes. My office is closer to you. But not right over.
We did have a system that comes by the Ohio Department of Energy last year for the grant, but we did include the whole movement that was one of the other factors. This would also, pleasure to share with you.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to accept this, to apply for the assistance firefighters grant program for the purchase of diesel exhaust extraction.
Very good. Motion by Mr. Weis, second by Mrs. Weis. Is there a discussion? There is no discussion. Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Weis.
Hi.
Mr. Weis.
Hi.
Very good motion carries. Next item is item K, motion to apply for Fire Prevention and Safety F T N S grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for the purchase of smoke detectors for the residential smoke detector program. Chief Perko.
This is similar to the Walmart grant. This one we are able to apply for substantially more money, in the amount of one hundred and four thousand dollars, one hundred and fourteen, two hundred dollars. It has a five percent match for five thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. I believe this one was approximately for four thousand smoke detectors. This program will also result in three residential fire safety inspections from inspectors.
Questions for Chief Perko and Mrs. Weis?
Chief, so would you say the average house in University Heights has three smoke detectors?
The state recommends one detector for four in the house and one in each area.
Even with this square footage of the house?
We welcome that.
Okay. And how would, if we got this grant, it would just be whoever requests assistance would get it, or are you going to have some kind of formula?
What we're looking at with firing grant would be to at least start the program off with those that need some kind of requirement, either they're handicapped or disabled, elderly, or have funding for purchase. And I should note that outside of the fire programs, people think that if you have detectors that they currently buy, we will think of the degree at this time.
Well, that's good to know. Thank you, Chief Perko. Any further questions or comments for Chief Perko, or about this proposal? Well, before I accept the motion, I want to thank Chief Perko for all your work in seeking out these grant opportunities and all your work then pursuing them without permission. I know that you've obtained hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants for the city over the years, and it's great to see progress continue, and your strong efforts continue. So, thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Weis, second by Mr. Weis. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Weis.
Hi.
Mr. Weis.
Hi.
Mr. Riddle.
Hi.
Mrs. Cameron.
Hi.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, sure. Go for it.
Approximately, how much does a RIT pack cost?
Five to eight thousand dollars each, depending on your options.
All right, next, item on the agenda is item L, motion to hold an executive session immediately following this regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal, and/or real estate matters. As of this time, I'm not aware of any personnel, legal, or real estate matters that require an executive session this evening, so unless somebody else has something, I suggest that there is no need to ask for a motion at this time. Very good. We will move on then to the Director's Courts, Director of Finance, James Goff.
On as of finance, wrapping up the 2018 reporting to the Federal Department of the Republic, as well as working on our gap conversion for our apparently certain time principal based pool reporting. We have a, started the audit work, the auditors started on April 23rd, and as part of that, we have an interest conference for council members that are interested in attending the Bureau of Finance page at nine AM on the 23rd. So I'll put that out to you guys, be able to sit today or talk to us, tell me about that, and I will be sending out a email. Beyond that, any questions for everybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Are there any questions for Mrs. Cameron? All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Next, Director of Law, Mr. McGarvey.
Mayor, I have no other work to see.
Very good. Public Safety, please, Chief Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. Just report on staffing update. We are hiring a law officer in the Department since April 29th, a law officer that's resigned in effect of April 25th, so this will correct to, so.
Chief, thank you, Chief Rogers. Are there any questions for Chief Rogers?
Chief, is he resigning? He's not retiring?
Correct. There's something further, then? Thank you, Chief Rogers. Public Safety, Fire, Chief Perko.
Thank you, Mayor. Fire Department's currently doing hydrant flushing. We just have a few more left, and then we're going to be starting to do full testing. We just have that wrapped up by the end of the month. We did come across a warning break at Renshaw in Brooklyn today. Cleveland Water was arriving, and it seems this evening started to sort of be, start defining that issue shortly. New fire update for the FD, we just finished up our interviews, and we'll be submitting the final candidates to the department for that one.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Any questions for Chief Perko? Seeing none, thanks, Chief Perko. Coming up then is Service, Mr. Corney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick reminder that we're still doing spring cleanup, reef collection groups are collecting curbside reef piles through the month of April, and once your bags, if you bang your leaves, we'll pick them up on your rubbish day. We've made one circulation of the city so far. Second item is on Friday, we will be picking up discarded food items curbside for Passover. And pass the city if everybody gets their items out before noon, we should be able to get them collected by the end of the day.
Good, so food items out before noon on Friday, curbside. Very good. Any questions for Mr. Corney?
What kind of food items? Hungry? Anything in particular, or?
Hurts.
Garbage. It's like a drive-through. Garbage food items. You're free to pick through the items.
Yeah. Anything at all? Mr. Corney.
Mr. Corney, are we doing a new contract this year where the company comes and takes traction in the city?
That is handled by the police department.
Okay. We haven't done that yet, or we're ready? No, sorry. I'll talk to you after, Chief.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corney. Sir. Anything else for Mr. Corney? Mrs. Cameron.
Mr. Corney, as it relates to the pool, I understand, our pool is thirty years old?
No. The pool was thirty years old before. Before the other residents.
Okay, so how old is the current pool?
Current pool is getting close to twenty years old.
Okay, I would leave that, thank you very much for that.
Very good. Anything else for Mr. Corney? Thank you, Mr. Corney. Next, Building Commissioner, Mr. McGrath.
I'll report this evening, Mayor.
Very, thank you, Mr. Weis. Next, City Engineer, Mr. Jimmy.
Thank you, Mayor. Construction season is almost upon us, it has started in a few areas. The Dominion Gas Line project in the Traymore area there is going real well. They're moving very long, I think most of the gas line and main line is in, and they're working on services, and it should be done shortly. Cedar Road is under construction, as you know, will be all summer, from Green Road all the way to I-271. Lastly, the waterline project, I know the mayor's got the two calls from residents out of Groblen, I talked to the contractor today, he still can't get topsoil. We called Kirk's Brothers today, and they just don't have it dry, topsoil put down, so he put the seam down. He is going to be passing out a notice to the residents, he's going to hand deliver it tomorrow, informing all the residents so they stop calling, telling them that within the next couple of weeks, he tends to be out there soon as he gets the topsoil. The other waterline project at Groblen, which was done last year, the restoration, Washington Boulevard, the waterline from Stanton to Wind Road will begin in the next couple of weeks. We're preparing that letter as well, we sent out a letter to the residents before we start, and then traffic control goes up and the, my type, they don't want to start it back.
There'll be a detour associated with that.
With that project, they're going to detour through traffic to Cedar and Tango, so they go around the block there. Local access will be allowed, safety forces will be allowed, trying to discourage type of traffic, make it easier for them to get down. And a report.
Any questions for Mr. Chief?
In regard to the gas line project, the streets that are currently done, where the sidewalks were torn up, when did they replace the sidewalks? They do the whole city at once, or?
Yeah, probably, and because, you know, Jeff.
I would imagine they would do all the sidewalks at one time.
I think they're bringing that concrete for soon to be started.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Jimmy. Next up, Special Projects, this is all on.
The parade is quickly approaching next month, and we have forty applications and aren't being returned, so we're getting there. I have about twenty other people or organizations that have committed, but they haven't returned their parts yet, so I'm in mom mode, I'm returning them home. The National Guard Band is returning, that was a big one, and Barbara Langford's working on getting a flyover, and it's just the kind of one after that, and then we'll have that. We did have a snap from last week, John Paul said that they will not be able to provide a shuttle for us, so we're going to use lolly the trolley, and I sent him out for that today. So lolly the trolley will take people from Carol to the line, and then be in the parade. And then change up with the food truck, we're going to have these clothes clustered, have a food truck for this ceremony, and the employables of the Carol after the parade, and that's kosher, so we have, you know, more of a change to those people. And the parade meeting, the parade committee's going to meet again on the 24th of this month. And I'm also working with Otter State on the open government training of the Carol on 31st and May from 10:00 to 3:00. And if anyone is interested, that is also open to the public, it has to be an elected official or public employee to learn about open records, and it can, it can count as C L A to bring returns.
Oh, no questions. I say L A tells me everything I do. All right, Mrs. Cameron, do you have a question?
Yes, we mentioned that the parade was going to be at Carol, yeah. So we're doing two part, we're doing our part, and, well, the employables are usually at the giant Carol where the ceremony is, and then there's like the pony rides, and the employables are in front of the doors from what I think we're doing now. Right, here we have, yeah. All right. He's hoping we're doing it in our part, right? That's what I thought.
I think we're having.
Yeah, we have the bike decorations.
Bike decorating.
These are, is it parade ends? Right, right, parade ends at Carol, so that's where like the family stuff is, so that they can stay. Like, is it starting in the same place? Um, well.
Yes.
Yeah.
Parade glasses.
Yeah, parade glasses, yeah, yeah.
All right. Any more questions?
Thank you, part of the cuff sales.
We're still selling, we sold two today.
Really?
Yes.
That's my favorite, huh?
Very good. Thank you. And now, Communication and Civic Engagement, Mr. Cook.
Two items to review, the mayor set in his reports. Birthday's Monday, the 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, we'll be distributing University Heights reusable shopping bags, so I know the mayor and councilwoman Weis will be there. If any of us view can, making at 4:00 to 6:00, will be helping to save the earth type of legary, and opportunity to read the technical instructions. Second item is, I don't know if you know this, I'm scribbling in the back, I am putting the issue edits on the second issue of the Save magazine, that goes to the printer on Monday afternoon. Good news on ad sales, and that was Cleveland Children's News this morning, they reported that they had ad sales that proceeded. First issue they have sold forty-one ads, and they'll sell two more. We are just shy of sixteen thousand dollars in ads being sold, you can, from our contract, you get thirty percent of that, and they pointed out to me that sixteen thousand in ad sales is more than South Yew Cliff, and that was, that was sold in the history of their magazine, so, and for a second issue, off to a business arc, and that's a reflection on, you know, the hard work that Marilyn Evans and the St. Cleveland Children's is doing, it's a reflection on, it was helping the magazine, and also it's a reflection on this work that all of you are doing, what businesses didn't like, you personally, they didn't like what the city was doing, they didn't feel excited about it, it wouldn't be, be on that, that, you know, or breaking open records, and that's, that's a good thought.
Excellent, excellent. Anything else, Mr. Cook? That's it. That's quite a lot, I'm suggesting, actually. The new newsletter's coming out shortly.
Yeah, I left that on my chair, I was putting on my winter coats. So, yeah, that would be hitting mailboxes this week, and the hard copies are available at City Hall.
The green issue's one.
The green issue, yes.
So, yeah, that'll be distributed to business tomorrow and the rest of the week, and hitting
mailboxes and emailboxes this week.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Mr. Cook? Thank you, Mr. Cook. All right, Economic Development, Mrs. Director.
I am excited to let you know, I received my first store park improvement program application, so, this past Friday, so I will be meeting with the architect, who's going to be the designated representative this Thursday. The application is for 13890 Cedar Road, that is the set of that current made houses, case for men, Liz nails, and lock stock of brisket. So there's six units there, three have been vacant. Because he's going to be doing the renovation, that's how he's been promoting to try to market his place, we have two new restaurants that are going to be moving in, one will be moving in where DeBorrow used to be, and then another one is taking the place of Dion's, who just recently moved out, where it's already being, they're all going to do some work. So we'll have five of the six units occupied for the program, along with the architect that will be presenting the application and the redevelopment plans at the planning commission on May 2nd, and then I'll have legislation for you for the funding component, prepared for the next council meeting, goal first reading, and then from there, the application will be presented to A R B on May 9th, and that's to, because they have new signage and for the exterior renovations. And that's to, because they have signage and for the exterior renovations. And now you have the board of council on May 20th for your final consideration of that own project, but then if you choose to offer some funding for that project. So I'm excited about that project as well, but it seemed to be, and they, the architect estimates, estimates it's going to take, once he gets his permits, approximately, around six weeks. So that's something we'll see in the next couple, couple months, to see a renovation pictures are, it looks very impressive. So I'm excited about that. And then on behalf of the city, I will be participating in the Heights Press Business Expo. That's going to be on in March, May 9th as well, which focuses on showcasing our local businesses. That's going through the 6:00 PM at the Wilkenberg. So I'll be there at a table.
I attended that expo last year, and there are a lot of tables from local businesses as well as other cities. It's a great place to network and get ideas, and then you just exchange all kinds of information. So encourage the general public to go attend, and the board members of council, they're going to go attend. And I intend to make appearance there as well. Any questions for Mrs. Drucker? I just want to say I'm really excited about the application for the Cedar Garden Plaza. Looking forward to seeing this go through and seeing this place in place conceivably by mid-wait summer.
It's nice, I am open to projects of friendly ownership, so it's nice to see John right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Housing Community Development, Mr. Ogermeyer is just not here, so we will get a report from him next time. And that takes us to Council Committee, Council Committee's building. Chairman Merkweiser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a building committee meeting this week. Live discussion, we've had several issues. First and foremost, we talked about when we passed the ordinance to allow chickens, backyard chicken coops in University Heights, we promised the residents that we would have a meeting by February of this year to discuss how it actually played out. There was a lot of, a lot of people were worried about whether or not backyard chicken coops were dangerous, unhealthy, would cause problems. We had a whole host of suggestions about how the whole thing might go south. And council reviewed it. We talked to a gentleman who had, has a backyard chicken coop. He brought eggs, which the mayor took home.
How were they? I haven't actually had them. They're intruded. And they're a separate part of the egg turn, but they're a little smaller than the other eggs. And I keep eyeing them, and I'm waiting. I don't want to just eat them ordinarily. I want, I want to do something very special with them, and I want to photograph it.
Eat them!
On Instagram or something.
Perhaps we'll have a special meeting to discuss the.
What kind of recipe?
In any case, the gentleman who has the chicken coop, I believe there's, there's one, three permits maybe in the city, but one coop. The building commissioner said there was one coop that he had gone to see, but it actually was covered and in the back, so he didn't think they had chickens. One of the, the original couple that had chickens left the city. I think of one live chicken coop in the city. The gentleman's neighbor, who's sitting to my right, informed us that he's never heard of, I've never heard from the chickens. They don't bother him. They did visit his yard once or twice, from what we could tell. But it was the overwhelming, was, I think with unanimous support, the building committee recommended to do nothing. It's just that there was some sunset provision in the law as we passed it. Now chickens are a permanent, you have permanent permission to have chickens in University Heights. The idea is that, once we gave our blessing to the idea, that maybe people wouldn't be afraid to invest. I think there still is a cap on the number of permits. That's 25, I think, everywhere. So at this point, that's the most, unless council takes some action. We could always withdraw it if there's a problem, but, but none of the problems or the worry that people had brought forward to us actually came to fruition. So that's the first thing we discussed. The second thing we discussed was the rental registration program. We discussed a lot of aspects of the program, from the fee that we might charge to whether or not landlords would get a credit for subsequent inspections. I think we all agreed that inspection every two years is called for and won't be changed. We had a lot of discussion about the number of, the amount of the fees. Council entertained the idea of possibly amending our ordinance. Well, so the, part of the council's ordinance has to do with, it says that you can't have more than three unrelated persons, unrelated adult persons, I believe, in, in a rental house. I think we decided to change that to just say three. We discussed whether or not to make it four, depending on the number of bedrooms that are, that are recognized by the county auditor. That, that is not, was not, a majority of council's not in favor of that. So I think we're going to eventually just change that section to say no more than three adults in a rental home. And remove the bit about the unrelated persons. I think that's, for various reasons, something that we want to sort of clean up. My care number specifically, what else we discussed, but we, I think, I think my charge is to go through with Mr. Ogermeyer and review the inspection report form that, that the city uses to inspect the rental homes and decide if there's a way to make it that landlords who have good inspections or clean inspections, whatever that ends up being, don't have to pay for the inspection in subsequent years, depending on how good the inspection is. We're not going to stop doing inspections, because we all view them as very important, but the question is whether or not to credit the landlords, so-called good landlords. They're all good landlords, but the overwhelming, one of the overwhelming complaints we've had from a lot of the landowners who have shown up is my place is clean, my place passes, why do I have to pay for the inspection? That's sort of under, under discussion. I, I, I imagine we'll have something to council probably by mid-May or the beginning of June in three days, because we want to put that in place by the time the summer hits. I hope I didn't just say anything at the committee meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weisman. Next up, Civic Information, Mrs. Cameron.
Well, we held our meeting, and the single item that was there, that we were there to discuss had to do with the motion to amend committee. And. At this point, I think what we're going to have to do is, based on the information that we discussed that evening, we're going to have to have the group come and make the presentation to council. So I will need Ms. Thomas to provide us with a date. Presumably. It's early in May.
You say a presentation to council, you mean, very regular council meeting?
Yes. The motion to be approved is going to have to make a presentation again. And I'm going to try to work with them to get them to make the presentation a bit livelier, a little less dry. And to focus more on the fun aspects of it, which is really, it's about our democracy. And there should be nothing dry about that evening. So. That's long and short.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Next, Finance Committee. Mrs. Perry is not here. Does anybody from the Finance Committee have a report they would care to make? Saying none. Governmental Affairs, Mrs. Wise.
Thank you.
Recreation, Mr. Erde, or Board Mayor. Public Safety, Mr. Rock.
Yes, Mayor, we're trying to get a meeting scheduled in May. I have the following dates available. I'm going to ask the clerk to send out a doodle poll to the committee members and chiefs. I have May 7th, 8th, 9th, May 14th, 15th, or 16th available for me to discuss a few things. Majority of it being potential ordinances to consider for the Fire Protection Bureau. We went over a lot at last meeting, so we're about to home in on that discussion. And I'd also like to talk about the parking permit, overnight parking permit program as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rock. Service Utilities, Mr. Simmons is not here. Does anybody from that committee have a report? Saying none. A committee poll, again, Mrs. Perry is not here, but we will be having a committee of the whole meeting here in this room at 6:00 PM prior to the next council meeting. The next council meeting will be May 6th. Yes, May 6th, so May 6th at 6:00 PM, the Cal meeting. And that seems to bring us to the end of our agenda.
One question. You had said at the beginning of the meeting that there was a school board meeting, a meeting with the school board of possible heights on the 17th of June. That I think is our second council meeting in June. I had it on my calendar as the 24th.
That may be right. Yeah, I mean, yes, the 17th, the other way, the council meeting. Yes. Yes. A joining of CHUH and University Heights Municipalities, that would be June 24th. Thank you, thank you for that. So, having reached the end of our, of our agenda here, that if there's no further business, the next item that would be in order would be a motion to. Sure. So moved. Second. A motion by Mr. Weisman, second by Mr. Erdl. There's no discussion. Mrs. Thomas, we call.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Weisman.
Hi.
Mr. Erdl.
Hi.
Ms. Yaman.
Hi.
Mrs. Wise. Hi.